You ready? We're all set?
Yep.
Good evening. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Thursday, May 4th, 2017. Please stand to pledge allegiance to the flag. Altogether now, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, united, individual, liberty, and justice Enzo, opening comments?
Yeah, okay. First, I'd like to thank Mary Lowe and Mary Ellen Schuman for devoting their time to arrange all the flowers in the town hall for the town meeting. And Pat McCoddle, Pat did the flowers outside. They were beautiful. I'd also like to thank Mazzy, our good friend Tommy Mazzy, for setting up the town hall. It's an awful lot, and the election downstairs, there's an awful lot of work to that, and he does most of it by himself, you know, putting it up and breaking it down, so, and you'd never even know that there was a meeting or an election downstairs, especially because he had to get that ready for the senior citizens the next day. I'd also like to thank the accounting office, Deb Waters and her assistant Lisa Arena, the treasure collector Kathy Kugis and her, you know, her assistant Kim Koschelekki. And Kathy Famulary also, we could recognize her because she was part of this whole budget process. She just left in March. And also to the finance committee. I mean, a special thanks goes to them because they really, the endless hours they put in, the time, the effort to watch over the town's budget, they do a great job, and I just want to thank them all. And that's it.
T?
I concur. The town hall looked terrific. It was a great job. I'd like to thank DPW, and you're here too, Dennis. I'd like to thank you and your boys for the great job at Forty Steps. When I went up there, I know you did it a few weeks ago, but I took a ride up there last week, it came out great, you know, and, yeah, it looks great, it looks great. Congrats. Thank you.
I just want to commend the town hall staff, and Jeff, the town hall looked wonderful, and congratulations, and thank you, a big thank you to Tommy Mazefaro for working around the clock to get everything done, and he really, by himself, and the help of the public works. And then in the public works, I want to thank you, Dennis, you and your team, for getting us through this sewer problem with the broken pipe and actually three water breaks, sewer breaks, all within, you know, three weeks. It was unbelievable that, and you had the right people, the Greenwich team come right in, and they did an outstanding job. I know the governor was tied up in that, one of those things, so maybe he'll release, Brendan Crichton and Tommy McGee, they're working on the state level to see if they can come up with some funding for us, some state grants, and hopefully that will help us out. I also, too, want to thank the finance committee for doing an excellent job under Brendan Ward and that whole team for their almost four months of working hard, night and day, being away from their families, and some of those meetings went to midnight later, and then it was a major, major thing. But, and the Forty Steps, would you do me a favor and put a large, a little larger, no parking, standing sign up there? I've got a complaint up there, he wants some...
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, he wants a large, for some reason that no parking sign is... I figure if you put a large one up, it would be good. I think that's it. I just, we want to, we should send letters out to the FinCom, Jeff, thanking them. The superintendent of public works and his team are well done on all of the projects. And I know you've got your hands full, especially during the month of May, you've got the cemetery coming up, and you're working on that, and I think that's, I see that improvement's already down there, which has gone huge. The key to the sum up here is that Memorial Day Cemetery, and Memorial Day... And that's about it. That's good. Okay. Any other opening comments? Jeff, you have anything?
No, I think you guys, you covered it.
Okay. Gentlemen, as in the past, also, I wanted to thank the citizens of the town for voting me back in, and I appreciate their support, and I appreciate very much them electing me for another three years.
Congratulations, Mr. Lombard.
Thank you.
Officially, on TV.
Well, I, I hope I serve the people and make the right decisions, hopefully. We've got a good board here, so both of you men are...
We can't beat you out.
No.
Probably over 100, I think.
No, 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 no. Anyways, but I did want to thank the citizens of the town for re-electing me. Thank you very much. As is in the past, it's customary to reorganize the Board of Selectmen. So, gentlemen, on the first part of our business, I'd like to take a motion, and I'll make the motion to appoint Enzo, the chairman of the Board of Selectmen.
Second.
Motion second, discussion. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'll also motion that T. Taylor be made vice chairman. Need a second?
I'll second that.
Motion second, discussion. All those in favor, signal by saying aye. Motion carries. Then...
I'll move to the point, Richard Lombard as recording secretary of the Board of Selectmen.
Second.
Motion been made, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the reorganization, we won't change chairs for the sake of time, so, Enzo, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. Okay, well, we need to approve the minutes of 2617, 4817, 42017, 42517, and release the executive session minutes of 11117.
I will make the motion to approve...
I moved that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the minutes of 26, 48, 420, 425 of 2017, and release executive session minutes of 11117.
I will second the motion.
Okay. Discussion? Nope. I think I'm okay with them, you?
Yes. I, when Mary Ellen does the minutes, I go over and over and over them and always send her a thank you. These are well done, up to date. If I have any questions, I always check with her as recording secretary.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, sewer update. Jeff, Dennis?
So, Dennis Ball is here. Dennis, if you want to come to the table. Richie really kind of covered the bulk of it. We had, as the town knows and many know, that we had three sewer breaks. One minor, two major sewer breaks. The two major sewer breaks were on the Linway, and these, all three happened over the last three, three and a half weeks. And this last one was a doozy. This one occurred on the Linway in front of the clock tower building, and it took us about a week to get that one fixed. As of, I think it was Tuesday morning, we were able to close the hole, put the traffic back to where it should be, and we very much appreciate the patience of the public. We tied up traffic for a long time, and, you know, everybody was courteous, polite, and they worked through the crisis, as we did as well. As Richie had identified, I'd like to thank our contractor, Greenwich, who did an excellent job, DCR, who did a fantastic job in trying to kind of help us through the process, and then Tom McGee and Brendan Crichton, who jumped in and really tried to help us initially to solve some of our problems with getting some of the parts here from other parts of the states. And they are now working with us to look at funding alternatives and opportunities to offset the costs. So, then, last but definitely not least, is the DPW. The DPW did an excellent job through that, through all three, and Dennis, this is trial by fire, so you are fully vested in your position now. Would you like to add something to all of that?
No, thank you, thank you, thank you. Just before I started, I'd like to thank a couple of gentlemen that were very instrumental, along with Tommy Mazefaro, in getting the town hall squared away for Tommy, and that was Kenny Taylor and Paul Kyra. They stepped up tremendously on Thursday and Friday to assist Tommy with the grounds and the interior, the cleanup of the town hall. As you know, we were all tied up in the street dealing with the sewer break, so I'd like to thank my seniors, my senior members of the DPW. They really, really, they step up every day that they work for me, work for the town, I should say. Just as a quick update, the trauma patient has been saved for now. There's a tremendous amount of work that has to be done with the system. Currently, we're seeking proposals to do an engineering survey of the system, of the system as a, in a whole, not only the pipe that's in place, there's an 18-inch force main, sewer ductile line that was installed in 1978, so it has a little bit of age to it. Pump stations are being addressed relative to the existing conditions and the operational functions of that system. Again, thanks all around. Steve Greenwich and his crew were phenomenal. I'd like to thank Timmy Lowe and the staff. Timmy was my field general, sure, on the island, DCR, and obviously the Board of Selectmen and Jeff for tolerating my management style, if you will, all right? I like to keep people informed. This event Tuesday evening, or actually Wednesday morning, became not only a Naha event, but it became a regional event. It became a regional event primarily because of traffic inconveniences and commerce interruption to the North Shore. We were very, very well aware of the consequences of the traffic. We tried to mitigate that as best we could, given the circumstances. We were running into challenges every day. Every day we turned around, we thought we had a solution, another two or three challenges would pop up. So again, hats off to Steve Greenwich and his team, as well as Danny Coughlin on our side, to mitigate an engineering solution, get us through this. I'd also like, real quick thanks to the Lynn Emergency Manager, Paul Ricci, who effectively stepped into my position as emergency manager in the hot at my request, and he took care of some paperwork issues and communication issues with the city of Lynn, Swambske, as well as me on my behalf. So, thanks, Paul. We have a very good relationship with those communities. So, at this point, again, this is, this is the beginning, this is the first day of a new day. The town has a lot of work to do with respect to finding out why, why, and then once we find out the whys, we'll figure out the solutions. But right now, there are, there are some steps being taken on our end from a pumping station standpoint to get some engineering, operational functions ticking a little bit better than they are, they were, okay? Do you have any questions at this point with respect to the sewer?
Well, first, I think you did a great job, you know, and the thing is, people don't realize that the DEP came in, and they've, you know, when they hear about this stuff and they check on everything, and you've got a clean bill of health, which is great, and they can be real, really difficult, so I commend you for that. Secondly, actually, first, I would like to get, I want everybody to know how much this is going to cost us, because I think it's important for the town people to know what this actually costs, so that we can, they can get an idea of what's going on. And I think we need to take a step back from everything in town for now and work on our infrastructure, because, I mean, as much as people don't really want to spend money on wastewater or water, we have to. It's very important, and we, you know, and it's going to cost us an awful lot of money, but we're going to have to do it, because we can't afford to have, can't afford to react. We need to act. Reaction costs money. Action doesn't, not as much. So, that's just my two cents. Richie?
Yeah, I, Dennis, you talk about baptism under fire, you came through and your team came through, and Steve Greenwich and his contractors, they're really, they know the business, and they've been with us for years, their fathers, Joe Greenwich, and since I've been in office, we've had water breaks and sewer breaks in the middle of January, you know, the middle of the night, and here they come across that causeway with all the equipment and personnel, and they always fix the problem. But I think we need to give you some help, and I'm going to propose tonight, and I just met with an individual that, I gave him the binder that you gave me on the report that was written in March on the water and sewer. And this individual, his name is Frank Magado, and he, he's retired from the city of New York on water and sewer. He handled all that, water and sewer. And I'd like to set up a sewer commission with him being a member, with additional a couple of people to assist you, you know, just because Frank, Frank's got the background, especially on these contracts, and he knows exactly, and he was very grateful when I dropped the, this deck is, how many pages? 450?
Five or four.
500, and he's the type of individual, he'll go right through that, and he'll assist you, and down the road going forward. We just need a couple other two people, maybe, we've got the expertise in town, and he's willing to do this, you know, free of charge. He's not going to charge the town, and he'd be, since he's retired, and I've been talking with him, and when he ran all of the city of New York, and New York State, the water and sewer, he was water and sewer commissioner, and he contracts, he's very, very smart in that area, and he'd be a welcome addition to assist you and guide you, maybe, just coming through up to this thing, especially where we're going to, because we have to know exactly what's in front of us. What else is wrong with that 40-year-old pipe, you know, going forward, because that's a pipe that's going across the causeway, down the Linway, and where that break happened down at that set of light, not the one on U-Haul, in front of the U-Haul place, the second one, it goes across the Linway. I saw that, it goes across the Linway. So now, if something happens down there, we've got to shut the whole Linway down, and get strategies to move the traffic down, you know, just, we've got to get a set of plans set up, and everyone has to be buying out, the state police, you know, all the, because that was, I know when we sent over the Naha police, those four officers that Bobby Dwyer sent over, they straightened it out, they knew exactly what to do, and they ran the road, they helped, they were very, very instrumental.
They were.
And I got to thank Bobby Dwyer and the Police Department, they, those four officers just moved the traffic through, and it was, especially traffic leaving, coming inbound, and of course, it was backed up to Bell Circle, so it was really, you know, both Route 1 and 1A, so.
Richie, also the Fire Department, we had all firefighters and, you know, on-call duty members who were participating as well.
Yeah, no, they, the whole, the whole team, everyone in this town, they deserve credit, and I wish we could, the Board of Selectmen had some sort of a slush fund, which we don't, we have no money to take them all out to dinner, or...
That's great.
Or do something for them, a little extra, and I'm, I'm working on that, I'm hoping some individuals in the town thought it was a great idea, and hopefully we can do that, maybe get a little awards night, you know, so to speak, and take them to a nice restaurant and take them all out to dinner, you know, the police, fire, and public works. But it's, you know, it's an idea, so I'm, I think people be willing to chip in and help to fray the cost for us. So, I want you to realize that. But Frank Magado is the first one to step up to the plate, and I, you know, he'd be excellent for you, because he's the type of individual, read that 500-page book, and he knows, he's been through it, you know, he's dealt with all this, the contracts and everything, even the contracts for this WAF situation, too. So, but I wanted to let you know that. I'd like the Board, maybe next, next...
The 18th?
Next meeting, we could get two other individuals to assist in that, creating this water commission sewer, so we can assist Dennis, especially, you know, this first year he's been in office. Just suggesting an idea to the Board.
Mr. T?
Thank you. I do wish, when you say stuff like that, I want to make a motion that we do that, Richie.
Okay.
Make it a motion, please, so we can officially start this commission. I think it's a terrific idea, and I really like it. I agree 100% with you, Enzo. We have to start thinking about infrastructure in this town, preventative maintenance.
Right.
And we've got the guy here to do it, you know, so Dennis has done a great job. Under fire, as Richie said.
So you're entertaining that motion?
I'm entertaining the motion that we start a sewer commission.
Richie? I'll make the motion.
I second it.
Okay, I, well, the motion is, I move that we create a water sewer commission, three-member committee.
Right.
One of which will be Frank Magado.
Yeah.
Okay, and we'll come up with two more, maybe one, someone from the finance committee to assist in the finances, and then a third resident, engineering type thing, so that they can assist him.
I'll be more than happy to sit on it.
Okay, excellent.
And...
And a member of the Board of Selectmen, and we can, we can make it as large you want, you know.
Right, and I would suggest, if you'll do it, Mark Cullen, because Mark is very familiar with the water and sewer in the hot, especially the sewer, because he did an awful lot...
He'd be excellent, he'd be an excellent, yeah.
If he's willing to do it, you know, we can ask him.
Sure. We can make the appointment next, next...
Yeah, he would be excellent. So, we'll slate it for the next...
You guys go for the meeting.
Okay.
But at least set up the committee.
Yes.
All right, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I just run this up real quick, Mr. Chalgrin. So, we are compiling the costs at this, at this point, and we have a pretty good handle on things at this point, it's just the smaller items, all the incidentals, we want to make sure that they were 100% plus, so we're not missing any, any cost items. We're also compiling a stock list that we should have, make-ready stock list to have on hand, and that's extremely important, and it proved to be pretty important, very important, primarily because it's the pipe size, it's an odd-sized pipe. That was our difficulty, obtaining, obtaining the parts that we needed.
Yeah, you should have those readily available, just in case it happens again.
And just very, very quickly, my thanks, my thanks, my thanks to the citizens, to the town in the hot, it was a tough week. I slept, or tried to sleep, next to some of those pump trucks. I know how difficult it was, particularly for the folks down on, down on the lowlands, on Flash Road, on WAF Street. We tried to mitigate this the best we possibly could, and again, thank you, thank you, thank you. Most people heeded our code-red requests with respect to water conservation, which, which helped us tremendously. Again, thank you, thank you, thank you, and I appreciate everyone's, everyone's patience. That went a long, long way.
I don't think, Dennis, the people of the town, I think majority knew there was a problem, but I don't think they realize, out of the nine satellite pump station, in the major pump station, we had to pump those out with at least 12 trucks, and they were going 24/7, and the noise and the pumps, I grant, those people, I mean, they were wondering, you know, we, you know, and I think the next time, we've got to spend a little more time on information to the public, so that they know, print or whatever, so they, people don't realize, you know, that pipe is the only pipe of sewer, and if we didn't pump those satellite pump station and the major pump station out, we would have been in some serious, serious problems. We probably would have had to shut down the water, so that, you know, that would probably be the, you know, until we fixed it, and that would have been a major concern, all the water. So, I think, you know, we should, we, next time, I think a lot of people didn't know what was going on.
Yeah, we learned a lot from this exercise, and Dennis and I have been chatting about some of the things that we hope to accomplish going forward, like, for instance, we'd like to make a connection to, by working with some of our surrounding communities, an emergency connection to their lines, so that we don't have to use the trucks, we can actually just flip a switch and divert the flows. And so that's something we'll be working towards. Again, it is trial by fire, and we learned some very valuable lessons.
Might be, just a suggestion, you know, we've got two water mains coming across, the 14-inch and the 10-inch coming across, with primary and a secondary water. We might need the primary sewer, the 14-inch main, 18-inch main, maybe a secondary sewer, you know, it might be a bad idea as a backup plan, just because if something happens, we're gone, you know?
Exactly.
So, that's just...
Right. Okay.
I'm thinking the Atlantic Ocean would be the secondary.
Well, no, 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 God, no. EPA, well, you talk about running for your life, that's all I need, although the best lapses were always out of those outfalls.
I think the committee can come up with a...
Yeah.
...solution, so that, and, you know, the other thing is, I do want to get some price, I want, I want everybody to know what this costs us.
Oh, certainly. As Dennis said, he's compiling the numbers now, we worked with accounting to make sure that they're, they're good numbers. We'll bring them first to the Selectmen, then I'll start taking them to Tom McGee and Brendan Crichton, and we're just trying to work our sources.
He's going to call me almost every day, Brendan Crichton.
They want to, they want to know how we can help.
Right.
Now, the first breakdown at Willarrow was $48,000. Am I correct? The one down at U-Haul was $258,000?
No, the $258 was both of those breaks.
What do you mean?
Thirty-eight, thirty-eight on Willow.
Well, thirty-eight. I thought it was forty.
Two-hundred, 22,000.
220 for the U-Haul.
On the U-Haul.
220, and now the, the other one is going to cost us more.
Right, I mean, the majority, the majority of the costs, I won't get into specifics, the majority of the costs, obviously, were the trucks.
Yeah, good, okay. I think people, you know, we just got to figure if we can get some grant money, state money, or federal money.
I inboxed the governor also on Facebook, let's see if he answers me.
Well, I think he was tied up in one of those, down by Kelly's, he sat there for a while, and he couldn't go anywhere, so I think maybe he'll, he'll help us, I mean, he's...
Yeah, they will. I'm confident we're going to get help, so...
I think, you know, this is unexplained, but, you know, we can't, we can't raise the water and sewer rates any higher than they are, so...
Okay, this one?
Before, before we jump on the next subject, usually we have an open...
Right, that's what I was going to ask for.
I think this couple...
We have a, we have a citizens forum, and I don't see that on our agenda, so I would ask that if any, is there any citizens out there would like to get up and speak? Nick? Sure. Go to the microphone and speak into the mic. Right here? That should be on.
Thank you, Dennis. Yeah, sit down.
I just want to comment about a couple articles I had at the town meeting, especially the one about gas leaks. Originally, I approached Jeff about it, it's got to be back in January, I think, about some, you know, seeing if this would be well-received or not, and a couple of weeks before the meeting, I actually checked with Peggy to see if the financial committee had made any comment on it, and they basically, it's not our purview to comment. So when I showed up on Saturday, and I see they did comment on it citing a couple of things, I mean, maybe I could have done something about it, obviously, what I did, I kept the city of Boston on there, just so people would know that Boston had already passed this, and that we would not have any legal responsibilities if we were to pass something on the same as this, and this was not that strict an ordinance either. So maybe what I'm hoping is, next meeting, to have on the agenda, we have a discussion about a gas leak ordinance, I mean, it's, the consumers, the citizens are actually paying for it, it's affecting our, the environment as far as climate change goes, I mean, we're obviously a seaside community, and the last thing I remember us doing anything about it was raising the dunes and planting dune grass. I mean, this is something that we should be addressing, it should really concern us. So I'm hoping for the next meeting that we could have a discussion, let the citizens know, and they could have their views about this also, whether this would be a good ordinance, or maybe we should try something stricter, or any ideas of that sort.
Yeah, okay. Absolutely, Nick.
You go ahead.
I don't disagree with you, and I don't think the FinCom did either. I think what happened was, there was too much, too many things from the city of Boston and that. I... and that. We needed to specifically make it for the town of Nahat, and there are, is it 80 leaks in Nahat?
Uh, 52, the, um, a website, HEET, H-E-E-T. They cite, and it's, um, will, actually puts us like 80th on the list.
All right, so, okay, that's where I get the 80 from. So, I, I don't disagree with you, I would love to work with you on it, because I can tell you that it, at one time, it wiped out Central Street, all the, uh, the trees. They do kill trees, and we are part of that tree, uh, I, I think I gave you the information...
Yep.
...for the gas company?
Yep.
Where they, you know, they have to come in and plant trees, or, there's a big lawsuit against them anyway. Uh, but I don't disagree with it. I think it's a good thing, I think you did a great, it's, it's a great justice you're doing for the town, and I would say that I would be more than happy to work with you on it, if you, you know, or somebody else, and, um, so we can get it, so that we can, and actually, we could probably present it at a special town meeting, because we are gonna be having a special town meeting. So, might be presentable then.
All right.
Okay?
And then, if I could, just the, the second article, and it was confusing, and I made a mistake by actually, I, I should have phrased it better, I tried to keep it short, and it was a confusing subject about Article 5, and I mentioned Republicans in there. My reasoning for that was sort of like the, the separation of powers and not having a king, and basically, it would give control to the Republicans as far as, uh, the federal constitution goes. I mean, just to have the moderator start off the question by saying that he's a Republican, I felt that was inappropriate, and maybe that's, something should have been said about that. Also, previously, somebody from the FinCom stepped up when another woman submitted an article for the warrant, and people were complaining about that, and she was defended, saying, she went through the process of getting the signatures and being on the warrant, which I did also, but it was, I guess, a political issue, which was Jim Walsh also had. But I can go back, I've got, uh, 82 towns that have passed resolutions and city councils concerning Citizens United. I can go back to our original constitution, the Massachusetts Legislature asked the towns if they wanted a constitution. The towns held town meetings, said they'd like to have a constitution, wanted to ratify it, and, and on and on. So this is something that has been throughout our history in Massachusetts, where the towns actually do voice their opinions, a political process also. And also, I was verbally accosted by somebody afterwards, well, actually in between there...
I witnessed it.
And I just sort of, I mean, telling me that I can't handle the results of the election, and, um, telling me I was a troublemaker or something, and, jeez, I, I must have confused me for a Democrat. I'm unenrolled, I'm independent. I mean, it's, that was part of, I guess, what didn't come across also, by my stating is about Republicans. I just, I want the best thing moving forward, it doesn't, I mean, whatever, that's, it was my mistake as far as that.
Can I suggest something? I, I'd rather have you wait instead of next meeting. We need to get a meeting with National Grid and this gas company, because, um, if you go down to Ocean Street, Valley Road, Willow Road, it looks like the checkerboard square down there, where they, they fixed, just temporary fixed pipes. These pipes have to, uh, be fixed, because once they ran in across the car's way into the pump station at the corner of Castle and Hot Road, they brought in a high-speed, high-pressure gas line. And the, and they, they, what they did is, the, uh, little Nahat, they put a new gas line up there, but they didn't do any of the rest of the town. They need to put new mains in, in these streets. And what's happening is, this high-pressure line is creating nothing but breaks, um, in, in the, in the, like Willow Road and Spring Road, where the pipe is not as deep, okay? And we've got traffic down there, and where they're breaking pipes, and the gas leaks are, uh, just, you can see it, because you can see the hot top they, they cure. We're, we're even afraid to spend money on the roadways in that area, because they're coming, they come right back in and re-dig it. Okay, re, they, they, uh, they don't care if it's just newly hot top, they go down, and they, under the Emergency Act, they can repair that, but our, our hot top session just goes for naught. So we've got to get a handle with National Grid and the gas company, and get them to commit and to sit down and have them submit a plan to us, replacing these mains, okay, and the services. These, these, that, those pipes are 100 years old, and they're just cracking left and right. That's the problem, and you can see it. If you hold off, we can get you some, hopefully get a meeting, invite you to, you know, the meeting with, with these people present, so you can hear exactly. I agree, because we lost all the trees out back, this, these gases just kill the trees, kill the roots, and we had to replace everything, or they did. But it's getting worse, not better.
Well, methane is one of the, for climate change also. This ordinance is not that strict either.
No, I know.
It's basically just a coordinating between the gas company and the town, when we open up the roads, and if we find a gas leak, then they need to address it, otherwise, then we'll get a permit for doing further work. I mean, it'd be nice to have it stricter also, but I mean, this was just a basic, let's work together on this.
Yep.
I mean, if we get something stricter, as far as that goes, and, and better coordination or...
And I apologize, you know, people, the problem, these petitions were at the end of the meeting, and people were sitting here since 12:15, and you get to 5:30, 6:00, people get tired, and that's another problem. We might have to move the, these, some of these articles up front, so that people are fresh and they can, you know, think about it. I think when you, your articles and the other article were at the end of the town meeting, and people wanted to go home. I'll, I'll be honest with you. And that's what happened, that's where the frustration starts, not only in your article, but the other, the other three.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I may?
Mm-hmm.
Richie's idea is a very good idea, but I'd like to start off this year by having motions seconded and voted on each time, because that way we're protected, we're covered, and we are all part of it, so that things just don't happen, and all of a sudden, I find out, or you find out, or Richie finds out later that, oh, it was decided, because so-and-so said this to Jeff. You know, we have to be more professional...
Yep.
...in our motions.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we have initiated a meeting with the National Grid and the gas company?
Second.
Jeff, and that, uh, and invite, uh, people concerning, advertise it, so these people, you're invited to that meeting, so you, you heard it, you hear it firsthand.
Okay.
And there's no mistake understanding. I make that motion.
T, second. All right, discussion, um, that's fine, we can do that, but I will tell you, I would like to have it at the special town meeting, 'cause I can tell you right now, National Grid won't do anything. If you don't put an ordinance in there, they'll, they'll, they'll leave, they'll leave them leaking, right? Am I right, Nick?
I would lead the way with that, as I say, it's not that strict or whatever, at least let them know...
If you don't have an ordinance, they're not, they're gonna just leave, let them leak. They don't really care.
Town council's here. Can the board of selectmen create that ordinance without going to town meeting?
The board of health, I think, is emergency, emergency, that you'd be looking at the play on those.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, 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 I, I...
Well, as long as they know that we mean business, because, again, there, there was a gas leak in front of my house, the, the guy had the wand right in the sewer...
Yeah.
And he said, "Well, it's not bad enough, uh, yet."
So, potentially, potentially what we could do is have, have the meeting, invite everyone with National Grid, and if we don't, if we don't like it, we can act, act as a board of health.
Right.
Right after that.
Oh, yeah.
Or we could do it beforehand, but I'm just saying, we have that option, is what the town council's saying.
I'd have the town administrator or the town council in conjunction, uh, with the parties here, that we draft the article and, and the motion and the ordinance, and maybe next meeting, we can vote on that a, as a health, as a board of health. And then, follow it up with a, uh, follow that up, and we'll put it on the special town meeting warrant.
I second.
Okay, uh, discussion, that's fine.
I mean, I'm, I'm all to, I mean, I just want to see something done, to, to start doing something, and also, it's leading the way for other communities to see what we're doing, and it puts more pressure on them to do something. As I say, this wasn't that strict. All it was asking was us to work together when we open up the road, so...
Can you, can you put, can you put that stuff together for us, for the town administrator? For, for the town of Nahat, and then present it?
That actually came from the organization, um, Clean Water, they're out of Boston, and, um, I can contact them, and part of the problem was, I had asked him to put something and make it just for Nahat, changed the wording, and there was some confusion, and he was like, "Well, we want to put some worker protections in there also." I'm like, "I'm, I'm just looking for the same one as Boston, so we're covered legally." And he was just held off, because he wanted to get the worker protection in there also, not that I'm against that, but it's just, if we had the same one as Boston, then we're covered legally, I believe.
All right, we'll, we'll get it, we'll get, let's get it done, all right?
Okay.
All right, thanks, Nick.
Thank you, gentlemen.
And the Democrats want it too, you know?
Yeah. All right.
I, I don't know, uh...
Billy?
Yep.
Bill Mahoney, 179 Willow Road. Uh, just wanted to talk, I see it's on the agenda, the WAF Slip Project, and, um, for the past month, been down the WAF, working on our boats, and, uh, talking with the sailors and fishermen, and people love the ocean, which is a good percentage of the town. We're concerned, because, uh, we thought that project would get done this winter, and it hasn't, and there's been talk that it might happen. Some people said it might happen after the boats got launched, and some other people said maybe in October or November. The best time is the time that you people designated last year, we feel, which would be January to, to April 1st, something like that. Therefore, nobody gets hurt. The boaters, the sailors, the lobstermen, it works out if it's done then.
Okay.
Any other time, it's gonna...
May I?
It's gonna ha, harm some people.
T?
Yep.
What happened, Bill? We took a vote, this is why I'm trying to condense into motion second and vote, so we can go back to it. We took a vote a few minutes, meetings ago, the fishermen came up, we decided to do it May 15th to Ju, July 1st, roughly. Motion second, we went forward. Come to find out, it turned out not to be the brightest thing to do. Uh, Mr. Conlon was in the minutes, but other people, and they were going to have meetings, et cetera, and emails were sent out, um, to defray people's agita, their fear and stuff. But they're addressing it tonight, we are addressing it tonight, and, and in fact, I, I talked with a few of the Mahonies myself, and in fact, it, it should not be done until the timeframe that we have tonight, and Mr. Shelgin will ma, make that. But thank you for coming, so you can get the answer.
Billy, we're gonna, we're gonna discuss this tonight.
Yeah.
We've got the contractor here, we've got the consultant here, the engineer, and of course, we get Dennis, and, um...
Let's, let's just move on with the, let's, let's talk about the co-scott housing first. Let's get that done first. WAF project's the next, next in line.
The young woman, the young woman.
Okay. Is it Margaret?
Yes.
Okay, I got it right, thank you.
Margaret Alexander, 5 Greystone Road. I wanted to say thank you, Enzo, for posting, uh, updates on Facebook...
Okay.
...about the leak. I think that really helped spread the word about what was going on, and just letting people know that it was progressing.
Yep.
That was nice, and, um, I really liked the suggestion to maybe move the citizen petitions to earlier in-town meeting.
The citizen's petition, oh, okay, for the Article 5, you mean?
Yeah, just, I, I think it, you know, where they're seated in-town meeting is indicative of the importance we're placing on them, and I'd like to see them moved.
You, you can, you can, any citizen can put anything on, on, um, at a town meeting, citizen's petition, so you, you guys work on it, and, um...
So it would be a petition to move the citizen's petition?
No, no, Margaret, I think what you're saying is that, uh, there were 41 articles in the, um, warrant, and the citizen petitions were Article 36, 37, 38, 39.
Right.
So what you're saying is, if they were to be, occur earlier in the warrant, then it would be better. Uh, that's something that the selectmen talk about, and the selectmen set the warrant, so, um, when we get to that point, that would be a key opportunity for any petitioners to come and speak with the selectmen about the order.
And having, having it, uh, we could do that, we could put that right up front.
But moving, that's not...
Well, wait, 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 hold on, and I, 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 you know, I want to, I don't want to lead you astray here. Most likely, with the FinCom and the town manager, we, we deal with the money articles first. The, the basic, uh, to run the government, and the various articles, buying trucks and they're usually up in front, okay?
Makes sense.
But, I mean, if we can handle your problem in the special town meeting coming up, there is, which is gonna be September, October, I think it's, you know, for the, right in there, we could put your article fairly up front on that special town meeting, so that you could discuss it. Hopefully, you won't need to get a special out, once we have this meeting with the National Grid, and you're satisfied with what you hear there, and, and if the town council comes up and we can get the ordinance passed with the board of selectmen and the town administrator and town council, that will take care of that, I, I think, your request, am I correct?
But I think she's talking about Article 5.
But that, that's not my request, although...
Your, your request is take the petitions, which are usually placed at the end of the financial.
My request is they not be dead last.
No, I understand, but sometimes it's, um, I don't want to mislead, it, these article, these, you know, petitions come, and it's, 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 um, the importance, I know it's important to you, and, and, but sometimes, the articles that are submitted by the department heads, you know, for police cruisers and fire, you know, those things, they're, they're usually up front. Okay, I don't want to, unless we, unless you stand in the beginning and ask the town moderator to take Article, whatever that article was...
37, yep.
37, out of order, and have it voted up front. You can do that at town meeting. And you need, I believe it's 25 votes to get it moved, or then you're gonna have a majority of the, of the town hall do it. Okay? You need 25 people to stand up and support your motion to move that Article 35 to up front somewhere. And then, uh, once that passes, like your motion's made, then you have to have the rest, the majority of the town meeting vote on it. That's how that would work. All right?
Yes.
If you're not satisfied with the, the order which they're at.
Well, I, I heard you identify them being at the, placed very at the end as a source of the frustration that people who did petitions and warrants experienced, and, um, that procedure seems like we're also putting a lot of frustration on those people.
I, you, I, I see you, um, I have, actually have the warrant with me, I think. I, she can be moved, they can be, certainly, we can move, move up, um, an article.
Yeah, and each...
I got them right here. This is, I mean, they were right, I mean, they, it could have been brought up right after the omnibus, uh...
Each year when we enter...
Because it's important, so you, you, you want, she's talking about Article 5, am I right? Nothing gas article.
I'm talking about the five articles that we had that were brought up.
Okay, at the very end, okay. All right, so...
It's 35, 37, yeah.
Right. I think we can, they can be moved up. But I think that, are you concerned with any one particular one of those, or all of them?
I liked all of them.
Okay. Well, that's something we can consider, I guess. I mean, I have, I have zoning ordinances, stormwater bylaw, I mean, those, I mean, some of that stuff can be brought up beforehand, but thank...
I don't want to give a misconception. I, you have to understand the priority of the town meeting, and the money articles and things like that are usually up front.
I think that makes sense.
And then, and then hopefully, maybe we can move it, it won't be last, so you won't get, you know, that frustration. You have to understand the townspeople and the taxpayer, when they come up, you know, it's been raining for three weeks, and sadly, it was 80-degree weather. And we really didn't have a good turnout. It wasn't, we were planning for a max turnout, and about 500 people, but they didn't show up because you have to understand, they've been inside for three weeks, and all of a sudden, 80-degree weather, they want to clean their windows and do the yard, and so a lot of people didn't show up. You know what I mean? And that's, and then you got the frustration that you felt, and then some anger spilled out, and I apologize for that. It was just something that should have never happened. I mean, this is just, you know, this is just normal business, it's not something that I, we want people, and, that's why we have a police officer here, to make sure something like that does not happen. And it will not happen again, I'll be honest with you. If we have to bring two police officers, one up front and one in back, to make sure that doesn't happen again. Okay?
Well, if we can continue the discussion on that, that would make me happy.
Good. Thanks, Margaret. Ken, did you want to say something?
Yeah, Ken Corangelo, 81 Willow Road. Just question, in terms of, some question about the cemetery stuff, and just as a point of order, didn't know if you wanted to raise those now, or when you're talking about the cemetery on the agenda.
What, do you want to move it?
I don't want to move it, I just, I had some questions, and I didn't know if you wanted them now, at this part, or when you're talking about that on the...
The cemetery's gonna be, we're gonna be talking about the cemetery in the, during the Town Administrator's report. If you wish to ask something now, sure.
The basic question was, are there any written or formal policies and, or information around how one gets a grave site, how, you know, how they're bought, prices, et cetera? There's not, there's information on the website and publicly available that talks about when flowers can be out and those sorts of things. And the contact number for the cemetery is in fact Dennis's number, wherever he went, it's the DPW. But in terms of just people being able to understand how it works, who's approving, all those sorts of things, it's, it's not, it's not clear from what at least is publicly, easily available.
It's done by the Board of Selectmen's office, so Mary Ellen would have that information. But we, we have some stuff on here that we're gonna, we might change tonight, so, but that's where you get the information, right out of the Selectmen's office, on how to purchase one, when you can purchase one, a plot, how many can be, how many cremations can be in one spot, or how many stones can be on a grave, yeah, all that stuff, it's all policy.
So I don't know if this falls under the town record digitization thing, or for those of us who can't get to town hall during business hours, it'd be helpful if that stuff was online.
What you're saying, Ken, is you'd like to be able to see it online.
Well, first of all, I want to confirm that it exists, and that's, that's good.
Yeah, A and then B.
And online, yeah.
Makes sense, instead of having to trek through things.
You should put the cemetery, the cemetery regulation. The cemetery falls under the Board of Selectmen.
Good question.
They're the, they're the cemetery trustees, and there's a set of, and we have a cemetery committee, and there's a set of rules and regulations for that cemetery, and we can just put that online, reprint that.
Yeah, there is, that's right. And the cemetery committee is, they're an advisory committee, but ultimately, the Board of Selectmen run the cemetery, so, and it should be online, you're right. We can, we can do that. So people will know and understand how it's done. But right now, for now, you can get copies of that from the Board of Selectmen's office, paper copies. And we can have Robert Wilson put them on there.
Oh, certainly.
All right? Okay, anybody else? All right. Okay, Coast Guard Housing Committee. We have a new one, and at town meeting, we decided that, the town meeting decided to dismiss the existing Coast Guard Housing Committee. And I wish to thank them, they did a great job, I mean, they've been there since 2008, I think, or 2005, anyway. They had brought the original plan to us, to the Board of Selectmen, and it failed, but times have changed, and I think, you know, it's time, it's time to move on from that. So we have a new, new committee being appointed. Richie, would you like to say anything?
Well, I just, I, I'd like to confirm that motion to dismiss the current Coast Guard Housing Committee tonight, so it's a formal vote from the board, before we, we're in the process of appointing a new committee going forward, and there's names being submitted to the Board of Selectmen, Town Moderator, and so that's, we, we need a vote, I think, believe, to dismiss the current Coast Guard Committee.
Second.
And then, and, okay, motion been made, second. I, I just want to thank that committee, they did a great job, but I think it's time for, we get some new faces and new, new blood on that committee, and hopefully, they'll come up with an idea and suggestion of whatever, and based on the special town meeting, the survey, you know, all that data that came in, and going forward. That's all I have, that.
All right, all those, well, I'll, we seconded for discussion. T, did you want to say anything?
I say, I say.
I, I can add that I'm, I'm sure they're saying it's not easy. It's never easy being on a committee. No. And it's volunteer, everybody has to understand it's volunteer, so they, they take their time to do it, and they did a great job, so. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the motion carried. Okay, now we're gonna go into the Town Administrator's report. We're gonna start with the WAF project.
Okay, great. We have with us tonight the contractor, Unified, and we, that is Dave and Bill, who are here. If you could stand up, just so that people see you. Thank you. And then we also have Fred Radcliffe from Child's Engineering, who's the project engineer. Then we have Dennis Paul, and the DPW director, and Rob Tebow, who's the harbor master, here to help us with the conversation. So as you had mentioned, T, there's been some back and forth in the scheduling. So initially, we had hoped to have the project done this past winter. Upon finding out that we had a delay in product order, we came back to the board, and the board then decided to move the timeline such that the ramp itself, the work on the ramp, would be moved to December through April 1st. So the second week in December to April 1st. As you also identified, at a later meeting, we then flipped it and moved it to April, June, and July, where, excuse me, June and July, where we would ask the contractor to finish the ramp in those months. We now have gone back to the second week in December to April 1st as the project timeline. And I'd like to thank Unified for your continued cooperation with us on moving this. I know that every move means that you have to juggle your work schedule around, and that's, that's not very easy to do, so we greatly appreciate that.
May I? T, did you want to ask, go ahead.
Whatever we do, I would like it in a motion.
Okay, well, all right, so we're gonna...
Jeff, are you finished?
We're gonna have some discussion. Can, may I?
Well, yeah, let Jeff finish, I want to...
Are you finished?
No, if I could, I'd just like to finish up with some more details. So what I provide the board is what's called a no-cost change work order. And this basically stays within the contract and allows us to make modifications to the contract itself without modifying, without changing the contract or moving outside the contract. So you have a copy of that, that's been reviewed by council. You also have a timeline that verifies that the work can be done within the specified period of time, and the contractors are here to verify that verbally, and the, again, contractors and engineers are here to answer any questions that you have about the project going forward.
Okay. If I, I'd like to start, if I may. First of all, I'm not gonna sign this. I'm gonna tell you, I won't sign it unless there's a clause in here, a penalty clause of $1,000 a day, that you go over the timeline. I don't understand, I still can't figure out why it wasn't finished. And I, I really don't think we should be commending anybody on cooperating with our schedule. They're the ones that made the mistake. They're the ones that didn't do the job, and I hold the engineering company accountable. And I don't understand what makes you think that I'm gonna actually sign this contract, or even remotely have any faith in your company to do, to do the job right. Because right now, I have none. And Vicky Masson, she did the change work order?
Yeah, she prepared the paperwork.
Well, she, she collected $45,000 last year from the town. Why is she here?
Because she's actually works for Dennis and works at his discretion.
Listen, we asked to have everybody here involved. She collected 45, and I'll remind you, she was getting paid out of a grant last year, $25,000. I'm seeing $45,000, all right? And I'm gonna say it over and over again, we are not hiring an engineer. And I want to know why the change work order is here, why she didn't monitor anything, if she got paid for it, and why it's not done. I'm all ears, gentlemen. So if you wish to get up and speak on it, go right ahead. But I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Lombard and Mr. Taylor, if they wish to ask questions too.
This new contract, I, how come she's not here, Jeff? She, she, if she, if she wrote the contract up... No, no, Dennis, Dennis, I, I don't want to, I...
This has got nothing to do with you, Dennis.
Has nothing to do with, but I just thought, if the board is having a hearing on this contract, and the supplemental contract, and to approve it, and we asked to make sure all the parties were here, Town Council. In fact, there's one thing in here, the Town Council, I, I'd like to see is the, the Town Council approves this here. It just says that he, it says here the Town Council signed it, but this change was checked, checked by the Town Council. I'd like to see the word "checked" instead of the word "checked," is approved by Town Council and the Town Administrator. You guys, you need to sign this, and have that statement in there, so that, there's a document in here. But this Victoria Masson, she's the, she's the one that is the engineer?
No, she is actually serves much the same purpose for Dennis that Mary Ellen serves for me. She does, she works on documents such as this, procures or assists in the procurement, and then offers assistance to Dennis when he's not available.
Okay. We've gone through this before, Jeff. We told you not to hire her. Listen, I don't understand why she's not here. This, this to me is just, if they don't finish it again this year, what's gonna happen? If they go over the date this year, what's gonna happen? I mean, if they, are we gonna go into May and June and July and, and then give them another contract? Listen...
I'd like to hear.
I'd like to hear from the bonding company. T, if you, if you wish to say anything before the Unified gets up, I'm all ears, but I want to know, this is not a contract that I'm, I'm comfortable with at all. And, and the engineer should have a new contract too, because he's gone over his time. I'm not comfortable with it.
So the contract that you see here, or the work order, the change work order, has a timeline associated with it, and the contractor is here to verify that he can do the work within the timeline?
He sent it last year, too.
Understood.
Wait, 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 um, T, do you want to say something?
No, you guys are doing a good job.
No, no, I, I just, since the contractors here, I'd like to have you come right up front, gentlemen, set up, set up front here, so you can get to the microphone. I think I understand what happened. Originally, the materials weren't, either weren't audited in time, or there was a delay from the manufacturer delivering the materials, and that happens. But the problem, I got, the reason why I voted, was part of the motion, I heard from Jeff that all the boats are coming off the WAF by May 15th, which is two weeks. And then I said, well, maybe, maybe they can get it, because I was on the impression that when you dig up the float, I mean, dig up the ramp, it was gonna take you 10 days to get it done. Let's jackhammer it up, put the rebar in, you know, the, down the front, and then pour the concrete. And I didn't, to me, it didn't seem like a big job, but, and I thought, Jeff told me you could get it done in 10 days, and I'm saying, well, gee, that would be before, then I realized, all of a sudden, that we got recreational boaters going out, and we've got the tall ships coming into, into Boston Harbor, so that combination, that date sequence, is probably not gonna work for us. So then we, we started moving, but I'd like to hear from you exactly what happened, so the townspeople know what happened. And then what your plans are, and what's the timetable. I know you pointed the wall already, you, you finished it. Did you appoint, did you point up the wall going down to the ramp? Has that been done yet?
When you say going down the ramp?
You know the ramp that you're gonna be replacing?
Yeah, no, there's no ramp wall that's in our contract.
Oh, there's no contract for that? I thought we had extra money left over.
What we're looking to do is to award an additional supplement that will come from funds that we have through...
Listen, that wasn't the question I asked, Richie. Okay, now, let's just, let's just start, no, no. The whole thing is, look, I'll run this, okay? I want to know, first of all, you weren't there half the time. I drive, I own a garage in the heart, so I drive around a lot, and you weren't there half the time. And when, when I went down there, you really weren't working. And there was times, this is the mildest winter we've had in years, okay? So if we have a nasty winter next year, what's gonna be the excuse then? All right? And May, June, July, they were off the table. It's December through April. I want to know why you weren't there, first of all, and I want to know what you're gonna do. And we're not gonna award any additional money, the wall's not done, okay? They didn't even complete that. All right? And the steel, why wasn't that approved? Why, why did the steel come in late? And it's still there. That stuff needs to be moved off the WAF completely, equipment, everything. Get it out of there. It doesn't belong there.
Wait, 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 let's, let's, you know, let's, let's...
So, please, Richie, wait a minute. Let me elaborate, sir.
Well, no, no, I understand, I understand, Enzo.
Please tell us what you're gonna do.
You know, I want to hear, this is the first time we've heard from the contractor, and I, I want to give him an opportunity, just to...
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to come speak with you, I, you know, I understand your frustrations, I mean, this is not a, not an easy thing. We, I don't know the exact timeline, sometime in the middle of December, we get our contract. We went through between 30 and 40 days of submittal process, getting all the materials submitted. One of the first items we submitted and approved on was the grouting for the, the seawall, which obviously got us started, got us in the ground, because that was an available product off the shelf, there's probably like a two-week lead on that. The next big item for us was the steel sheeting, which basically forms the outside of the new ramp. That sheeting typically, you can run any, anywhere between like an eight and a 14-week lead time on that. I think we got it in about eight or nine weeks. We put some pressure on our supplier to get it to us. We got it, got it coated, fabricated, and shipped up here. I think what, what everyone's missing is the, back in, I think it was late February, early March, we had a meeting with Jeff and Dennis and the engineering team, we all talked about being complete off the site by April 1st, which is basically, we all talked about leaving our container there with the, you know, the stored materials, the sheeting and whatnot. And there is an excavator down there, which we intend to pull out of there, which is easy enough, that's not a big problem. As far as timeline going forward, there's basically about 90 days of hard construction to do. We've talked to Dennis, we've talked to Jeff. You know, we had three different scenarios, we talked about starting in May, you know, late May, early June, we talked about December, which, you know, it came back and forth a few times, and now we've agreed on December. Obviously, we all know what weather's like here in New England in December, January, February. It's, I imagine it's extremely cold up here, it's, it's gonna be wet. Those 90 days, I mean, hopefully, we've got enough time built in for bad weather and bad, between water and, and coldness. So it, you know, I mean, I think 90 days is a feasible thing.
Did you bid on this?
Did I what?
Did you bid on the project? Originally?
Do we...
Initially, you bid on the contract, correct?
Yeah.
So what, what made you think that, are you from Florida? Because we, the, the original contract said you were gonna do it December through April, correct?
Correct, yes.
So, now, next winter, all right, so you're saying, you know, the coldness and all that is, is playing, and you wanted to have it done in November, you wanted to start in September, October, November, and it's gonna, it'll interfere with the fishermen, it'll interfere with a lot of people, okay? And it created a lot of problems, I can tell you that, all right? So I'm telling you, what makes you think that I am gonna sign a contract? What makes you think I'm gonna trust you to get it done, first of all? When I went down there, nothing was being done, barely anything at all. I mean, there were hand mixing cement, you know, and, and hand pouring it, and then, you know, putting the, you know, the slurry into the, into the wall.
That's what the contract called for.
All right? And if you, you said there's a lead time of nine weeks, you know, for the, why wasn't the stuff ordered before that? I mean, if you knew that it wasn't gonna get done in April, Mr., you know, what's your, Fred?
Fred, Fred.
Okay. If you knew it wasn't gonna, because I, I have the timeline here somewhere that explains that you went back and forth... you went back and forth with the sheeting. Okay? So, you should've gave, given everybody a heads up on that. Especially the Board of Selectmen, so that we would've known that they weren't gonna get the sheeting in time. Okay? He's saying that, he signed a contract between December and April, so obviously you must've known you weren't gonna get it done. If, if, if you were gonna have nine weeks of lead, you know, lead time to get the stuff, uh, no, eight, you said eighteen weeks first.
I believe, uh, nine to fourteen.
Okay, so, you just got the stuff, you just got the sheeting when? In March?
Enzo, our goal is to have an end product.
Understandable, Jeff, but I don't, I don't trust the end product.
And to have that end product within budget.
Okay, I don't trust the end product. I, I, Jeff, I don't trust the end product. I'm sorry.
It's, it's really not up to us, you know, and not even myself, as, as a layman within this, to, um, determine what is good or bad.
Then why wasn't a penalty clause included on the first contract?
It's a standard contract for-
It's not a standard contract. This is New England. There should've been a penalty clause in there, and they should've, listen, someone's gotta, someone has to be held accountable.
And they are held accountable by the contract. And so, again, all we're interested in doing is getting-
Doesn't sound like that to me.
All we're interested in doing is getting the product within the budget. Um, this, there were two bids that we received. This one was received as the lowest bid. The next closest bid was almost twice that price. So, um, it's in our best interest to proceed to finish the product within budget, and that is what's being offered now.
Well, I wanna see more in the contract, Jeff. I wanna see a penalty clause in there, a thousand dollars a day?
There are penalty clauses there. Um, Council, I don't know if you want to speak to the thousand dollars?
So what was the, what were the penalty clauses for the first initial one? Tell me. Okay, well, why? Can, can, can anybody answer that? And, and the contract was given to us the day that we had to sign it. I mean, again, I don't wanna see this. This is brand new. I don't wanna see this today. I asked for the contract, I asked for his contract, the day, I, I asked for it in an email to get it to me before tonight's meeting. And I don't see that. I'm not signing, I can tell you right now-
And you're not being asked to sign this tonight.
I'm, I'm, unless I see penalty clauses, unless I see, um, you know, I want, they have to be on site all the time. There's no penalty clauses, Jeff. It was, it was a terrible contract. Terrible.
If you look at the change work order, the third sheet, it says at the top, number one, penalty clause.
Okay, so what, what's the penalty clause?
The penalty clause speaks to, um, the, uh-
I don't see a dollar figure there.
No, it doesn't speak to a dollar figure.
So, and the bonding company, what do they say?
The bonding company says they are holding the bond. It will, it will remain in place until the end product.
So, what's gonna happen if the bond, if, if we don't get a finished product? First of all, we're gonna lose, we'll, we'll lose the grant, uh, because-
Then we retain the payments in such a way that we have a product without having to pay it.
You better get back down to your work, boys, and, and, and I'm not gonna sign this contract. And he needs a contract too, the engineer. And don't pay anybody.
His engineer, his, his engineering contract is already in place.
Can I, Mr. Chairman?
Jeff, I mean, Richie, go ahead.
Do you have anything to say?
No.
I'd just like to hear from you, you know, the contractor just explain to me, um, and, and assure me. I think the Board of Selectmen was embarrassed, so to speak, because we've got, uh, two major groups down there. Recreation, and then we've got the lobstermen, who we, we're dealing with. And, um, we're trying to work through this as best we can, but it took us by surprise, okay? And we were, we were thrown, all of a sudden, that we're on the defensive instead of offense. This is a nice contract, you know? Almost seven hundred thousand dollars, eight hundred thousand dollars, you know, and, I, I just want some guarantees from you and from the engineering firm that, uh, this is not gonna happen again, number one. Number two, and, um, you can go in, I, I, I'd like to give you dates in May and June, but the problem, that, that ramp is huge.
It's not real.
May and June, and, yeah, we've got the tall ships coming in, the recreation, you know, people wanna put the boats in, and, uh, I, uh, I can see what happened. I can understand what happened. But I just wanna get some insurances that we're not gonna go through this scenario again. The contract, get it done, get a completed job, and, uh, get you paid, you know, like, according to the contract. I, I just don't wanna be embarrassed.
Yeah, I, I can certainly understand that, and I understand, you know, that, you know, the politics and the one on town and the different parties.
No politics here, none.
It's really not politics. It's just a matter, it's a matter of, uh, we're trying to get this done.
Maybe it's the long term.
And the weather, you know, I, I can't, we can't go through another scenario. You start, I don't know when they're gonna start this project. I, that's the other thing, I'm not, we haven't, we haven't agreed on a date yet, because the last date I heard was May, um, fif- sixteen.
Now, is that what it is?
And then, then we, we canceled that, we, we did cancel that.
I would appreciate the email stop too. Okay? With everybody. So, the contract is right here with you.
We shouldn't be sending an email. No one, the Board of Selectmen take charge of this. No one should be sending any emails out, because all it does is cause creation, just confusion and more confusion. So, um, we haven't given you a chance to speak. I'd like to have you address the situation and tell us the board, um, what your plans are, how you can do. I'm not so much about the material down on the site, but, Dennis can probably give, supply you with a site. There's plenty of places around town where you can put all that temporarily. But, um, we, we've got a, you know, that's a lot happening down there. Always is during the summer, you know?
Right. I, I understand. I mean, right now, the long lead item was the sheeting. That's in, approved, coated, on site. Um, the next item, actually, everything's been approved. I believe, I believe there may be one submittal that we need to get approved, which is like the finish on the slab itself. The, uh, all the materials available, the concrete's readily available. It's just a matter of days. So, it's, you know, it's basically, it's a ninety-day process to-
So it takes you three months to get it done?
Yeah, I mean, you've gotta understand with the, um, sheeting goes in, the, the de-watering, the slab comes out, and then the, the new slab goes in. There's, um, obviously curing times before we can get on there to pull the, uh, cofferdam, our, our secondary sheeting out. So, it, it, there is a process. It's, we looked at different ways of, like, doubling up, and, and it just, the project site doesn't, and the project itself doesn't kinda lend itself to that, because it, it's a long, narrow sliver. And, you know, you, once you get the site de-watered, it's demolition. I can't really safely start another trade, say, like the ironworkers to install the, uh, the rebar, until demolition's done. So the rebar will go in, and the concrete will follow. So, it, it's, it's tough to try to squeeze that, that ninety days down to, say, fifty. It, it just doesn't seem to work. You know?
Do you wanna back up? I mean, is there a backup plan, just to say, if, say we do have a, a real bad winter, you know? And what, what's the temperature that, uh, what's the breakpoint of temperature where you have to add antifreeze to that mix of the concrete when you pour the slab?
Typically, fifty degrees and rising.
Fifteen degrees?
Fifty degrees in the morning and rising during the day is pretty standard.
Now, is this, the other question I had is slip. Is it gonna be a non-skid type cement?
It's, yeah, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's like a one-inch V.
Yeah. Non-slip, so they, you know?
Yeah, if you look at the Blossom Street ramp, um, if you, if you see, it's a ridged ramp, and so it's very similar design.
How come, how come the, uh, why hasn't the surface been approved yet?
I haven't submitted on the equipment to finish it.
Why hasn't, why wasn't that done months ago? I still don't understand. See, again, that's the, the trust factor. You have to understand, I just, I don't, I don't trust you.
Well, that's fine, but I've never lied to you, and you've got no reason to not trust me.
So, you know, I'm just saying, I don't trust, again, I can't trust what you say, because you've, you've let us down. You let the town down. And you did too.
It just, it just, it's kinda like, I just said, it was, it's kinda, we were caught off guard, the board. And I don't like to be embarrassed. Especially with all the boaters and, uh, as I say, that's a very busy place. You know, May, June, July, and August, and even September and October. I mean, I'd love to put you in there in the middle of September, you know, September, October, November, so that we're away from the winter, but the problem is the lobstermen, uh, you know, we got thirty-five lobstermen with their boats, and they're coming back and forth.
Yeah, everyone's gonna make a living down there.
I, I, I'd like to get it done, you know what I mean? Before we go into next year, or, you know, just, I, you know? But, um, I, I just think, um, I don't know you, to trust you and not to trust you. All I know is I was embarrassed. And, uh, and, uh, so I, I think that, uh, you need to work with, with Mr. Charles, not Charles, Raff, the, um, engineering. And this Vicki Masson, I don't know where she is, but, Dennis, I don't want that involved. But I think we need to get this project done. That's the bottom line. I, it's the end result. Let's finish the contract. Let's stay on, stay on plan, get this secure date. This new contract, I think you'd have to tweak a little bit, Jeff.
Yeah, we can, we can work on some tweaking.
With a, with a penalty clause, or whatever Enzo wants, and, or T, and the town council can approve it, and, uh, move on. We just, we just need to get this thing done, because it's, it's dragging on now. You know what I mean?
Understood.
Yeah.
If I may? Bill, the, the answer is December fourth.
Okay. December fourth is gonna start?
December fourth.
Yeah, there, there are two bills.
Oh, all right.
I'm sorry.
The bill behind you, yes.
Cause you, hasn't been said yet, and I know that's why you're here. What was it said, it was October, was May, was, you know, this here, that, that, and that's where I'm saying, because of it. Right. Right. So, December fourth. Is December okay? Beginning of December? December okay?
Well, the fishermen, they can use the wall at high tide, and at low tide, they can use the pier. Am I correct? That will be available there.
Right. I, I don't wanna inconvenience them. I can tell you that. I don't wanna inconvenience anybody, because it should've been done. This is, we should be using a brand-new slip right now, so I, I feel as though that they should be accommodating us, period. So, and I want a penalty clause in there, and then I'll read it, and then I'll think about signing it again, okay? After what?
And that, that's for, and that's for disturbance of the ramp. So, there are peripheral work that can be done that will not affect the ramp itself, which, um, if December fourth is the start time, you can do the peripheral work, and then disturb the ramp after Christmas.
Well, hold on, I, I, you know, I, I'd rather give Billy, I, you know, no, I'd rather give them a chance, uh, to get that started early December. You know, um, and, um, so the window, the, the, this weather is gonna be iffy. I mean, you know, we, I'd rather get it done more so than anything else. You know what I mean, Billy? No, 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 I, well, you can understand. The only other thing the board has to decide, I know, I see, Robbie.
Right.
The, the board make a decision and say, uh, "Let's get the ramp done. Our number-one priority. Contract is here, and, uh, let's get on with it." He says ninety days. The problem, that's three months. And if we shut it down, if we shut it down- Well, I, I, again, that, you know, that's, you know- No, I understand, but he can't, he, he can't work with snowstorms, he can't work with snowstorms down there, and, and, uh, northeast storms, and that's gonna back it up, and that, you know, that, that's gonna be a thing. Then we've got, it, it- Well, the end result, that means we gotta push it in, you know, March, April, May. And that's the other problem. I mean, it, it's gonna be one or the other. We, the problem is, is someone's gonna get disrupted down there. We need to get this done, Billy. And everyone agrees to that end result. But the problem, nobody wants- But you, Billy, you know, December, January, and February are very difficult months down here, especially along the shore. If he was working in May, if he was, if he was work- Well, the problem is, it's, you know-
Mr. Thibault? Richie, uh, uh- Well, we, the, the last, the last closeout date was April what?
First, was the substantial completion.
So when do we put the boats in? April? Okay, so, and we can, they can run into, they can run into, uh, the middle of April. That would be fine, all right? So- Okay, then that should've been thought of last year too, because we, we planned on doing it last year at the same time. So, I, I don't understand why that, I mean, I, I can understand your point, Rob, but that wasn't an issue last year. Now it's becoming an issue. So, and it's becoming an issue because it's not done. And this is where I get upset, okay? And I get upset with the emails, I get upset with a lot of things. I am just telling you-
Well, why don't we do this?
It's gotta be done December.
Why don't we do this, why don't we do this, Enzo? Why don't we do this, Enzo? Let's cancel the contract. We'll vote to cancel the contract tonight and not do the ramp at all until you people decide when it's available to you, and then we can have a window. We're going around here, this is all nonsense. We've got a contract for $800,000. It's been approved and get going here. This contractor had a problem. Okay. What can we do? I could take them out back and give them 50 lashes. I can't do that. I better get that thing finished down there. And I can't, I'm here, and the lobstermen can't do this. Recreational boaters can't do this. So we might as well, why don't we scratch it and not do anything until the thing completely shuts down? And then we'll do it May, June, and July and shut the wharf down. It's just like the board voted not to have any of the kids swimming off the wharf while they're in contract. Now, I, we're going back and forth here, you know, we've got, now we've got Enzo saying, you know, he's gonna put $10,000 fine per day. This contract's not gonna sign, anything like that. We gotta supplement the contract. We gotta get this thing fixed.
So, Rob...
Now, someone's gonna be disruptive and someone, you know, and if you're worried about people getting injured, then we have to shut the site down. And you're bringing this up. And then you're the one that sent out an email about November. And again, that was more confusing. Again, Jeff, I, you know, we're going, we're going back and forth, back and forth here. One or the other, something's gotta give, and someone's gotta be disruptive. And we've got a problem with the contract. Okay? Forget it. That's next, that's step one. Now we're gonna be moving to step two. Let's get on with this thing.
And we have to. We have to get on with it.
Well, you keep, you keep beating them up. I'm getting to the point, I'm getting to the point, you know, I understand, but I'm getting to the point, you know, it gets frustrated in sitting here. Which way should I vote? Should I vote no? Say no on everything?
I'm just trying to protect the town, Richie.
No, I know. So am I.
It's our $10,000 a day. It's a penalty clause. It's in every standard contract that we just, we, it wasn't in there.
I understand.
So that's, we're gonna have that, okay?
So you're gonna have the $1,000?
So, well, whatever. $500 a day.
Whatever it is.
But we have to have something, okay?
Okay.
Gentlemen, if I may. Gentlemen, please. I would like you to entertain. I'm listening. I think if we have a start date of December 11th, listening to what the town administrator said as far as getting everything ready will probably take us through Christmas. And we can probably make sure of that.
Yes.
And then we add a week to April 1st and make it April 8th. If we have to, we go to the 15th, but no further.
Well, I think we can go to the 15th.
Well, let's, in this way, I want to satisfy the lobstermen. I really do. I mean, that's how I feel. And if that's amenable to the lobstermen, let's go forward with a penalty clause. I'm 100% with Enzo with the penalty clause. I'll second it for discussion. And the only discussion I have on it is, I'm just looking out for the town. I really, the trust factor, I still don't have it. But, you know, and I want, I want that in the contract. Vicki Masson should have been here. She got paid a lot of money. And I'll go along with the December 15th, 11th, what was it?
December 11th.
December 11th. If you have a calendar there. And we can go into April 15th. I don't think that's a problem, okay? I think the month of April, I think you're pretty much clear. I mean, I don't see how you can dig up the ramp and if the ramp, you know, if we have a northeastern in January, it's no big deal. I mean, I don't see why you can't, you know, March and April, get it done, okay?
Is that agreeable with the contract?
I'm sorry?
Are those dates agreeable to you? You can get it done in that period? Okay. And then I'd give yourself some leeway, you know, either end.
And I still agree with Enzo. We should have some kind of a penalty clause.
Okay. What do you want? How much do you want?
I'm not saying.
Something. There's gotta be something in there.
Town administrator work it out.
Let's work with town council.
The town administrator works it out.
Yeah, let us work with town council.
I move that we put the contract off to the next meeting to sign it. I think we're gonna approve it, gentlemen. Okay? I want to let you know, you know, I'm for getting it approved and getting it done, you know? Someone has to be inconvenienced somewhere on the line here, you know? But I, the May 16th date, which was just, you know, it was just a window, and I voted because I thought just at two weeks, you could pour that. And I'm thinking, you know, you dig it up, jackhammer it, pour the rebar in, and then pour the concrete. I mean, you know, without...
I was never in favor of it. I just wanted to go on record as I was never in favor of May.
Okay, okay, okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Great. Thank you, guys.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay.
Moving along with the town administrator report, cemetery functions. We've had a discussion...
Gentlemen, thank you very much for coming. Thank you very much.
We've had a discussion about the possibility of moving the cemetery sale of plots and some of the kind of administrative functions of the cemetery from the selectman's office to the town clerk's office. The cemetery commission is actually the board of selectmen. It seems appropriate to keep the functions with the selectman's office. But I, it's on the agenda, so I open it up for discussion.
Okay. We work fine with the town clerk. She does the deeds. I don't see why we don't put the whole thing over there because I just, I think it's a better, it's a better fit over there. So I'm gonna make the motion.
If I could, if I could, there's a concern that there may be the sense of a conflict of interest.
And why's that, Jeff?
Because of your association with the town clerk. And that's just something that's been brought to my attention.
And by who?
By staff members.
By the staff members. So the staff members think that is, okay. So do you want to get into this now?
Oh, no, no. All I'm saying is...
Do you want to get into what would happen?
All I'm saying is there is a sense of, and that's something we should be aware of.
There is absolutely no conflict of interest. There's two other selectmen.
Maybe council can weigh in on this.
Listen, there's two other selectmen, okay? I'm only one selectman. So there's no conflict of interest. And my wife, my wife, the town clerk, might not be the town clerk next year. She can get unelected, correct? Okay. So it wasn't a problem when Bob Steves was here with Harriet.
I can't speak to that.
Okay.
Boy, it was never moved during Bob Steves' day.
Richie?
I mean...
I'll entertain a motion that we move the cemetery sale. And the deeds are already there. She does the deeds. Since she does the deaths, certificates, and all that, I don't see why not. I second. Discussion.
Discussion. The board of selectmen have always been the library trustees.
The cemetery.
The cemetery trustees. And I don't see moving that over to the town clerk's area is very good. I just don't see the plus or minus with this thing. It's always been... Can I finish?
Oh, sure. Go ahead.
And number two, I, you know, I see a conflict of interest, especially your wife being the town clerk. I guess, I don't think you can vote on this thing. And I don't think, let me finish.
Okay.
You're married to the town clerk.
Yeah.
And that's a conflict of interest.
So when were you gonna let me know that this was all gonna happen tonight?
Well, let me ask you a question. I never thought this was gonna be brought up.
Well, would you like me to bring up what happened?
Yeah, absolutely.
Oh, okay.
Absolutely. Go right ahead.
Somebody was trying to sell a cemetery plot.
Yes, yeah.
And behind the other two board of selectman members, and I don't appreciate that. So as for transparency, she does the deeds anyway, so I don't see what the problem is.
Let me ask you this question. How long you ever been in the office?
This would be my second year.
Second year. Has there been any plots sold in that two years outside of the normal procedure?
I wouldn't know, because only the chairman signs it, the deeds. The chairman signs the deeds. So I wouldn't know that. Now, this year, I'm the chairman this year, so any deeds that come forward, I'd be signing.
Absolutely.
So I'll know who died.
Absolutely.
So the bottom line is, the only argument I have, I don't see it as being a conflict of interest at all. I, town council's here. How is that a conflict of interest? Please elaborate.
.................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................... ...[1178.82]
it immediately, I would have brought it up to the board, I would have put it on the agenda for a vote, okay? And now we've got this big brouhaha about, on the cemetery plot and we're worried about, this is, you know, this is something that the town administrator could have handled, you know, but I, again, we're discussing and debating this and blaming people where I should blame.
No one's getting blamed, Richie, I just wanna make sure that it's done in a transparent fashion. I don't believe it to be a conflict of interest, so I'm gonna call the question and I will recuse myself. All those in favor?
You can't, wait a minute, you, wait a minute, you just can't be moving that way. You, you.
The question came up, so I recuse myself.
Wait a minute, you haven't given T a chance to speak.
Oh, T wishes to speak, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I think we should do what you said, is rescind the motion and then move that all cemetery plots voted on by all three selectmen.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all those in, for discussion, that's fine. Transparency, the deeds have to be signed by all three selectmen, okay? So that we know who's getting a deed and who's not, okay? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Great, let me have the forms changed to have all three signatures on those.
Thank you.
The next item is the annual town meeting warrant kind of follow-up. So, what you'll see is the executive summary, a copy of that. What we've done is we've updated with all the information on the votes, follow-through, et cetera. So now what I'm going to do is take the follow-throughs and some of the actions that are weaved in here and start to prepare a list of actions and then bring those back to you periodically. And there's quite a few of them in here, you know, I'll be speaking with you frequently as individuals and as a board as to how we wanna handle some of this stuff. But it was a very good town meeting, I'd like to thank Dave Conlin for navigating us through a very, very long meeting. So, it's great to see this executive summary filled out and completed, and if you have any questions on this, please let me know, but this just gives us kind of the overview of what happened. Next item is the quarterlies.
Excuse me, may I, Mr. Chairman?
All right, yep, sure.
On the town meeting review, I think the town needs to get a full understanding of what happened with the Coast Guard housing vote, because it was amended quite a few times.
Exactly.
Being there, yeah, of course we know, but I think the town, because I've been asked, you know, capas, what happened, you know, and the town spoke, the town meeting spoke, I understand that, but I think that the town should hear what the next step is, what the outcome is. If we could do that for next meeting?
That'd be great. One of the things I was gonna say is that we're waiting for the town clerk to kind of sift through everything to give us, to give us the final wording so that nobody's making a mistake.
Right, to ask for tonight would have been ridiculous, because I agree with that, because it went on and on and, which is fine, that's what town meetings are for, but, you know, just an understanding for everybody here and everybody out there in TV land. Thank you.
So, I'll do that specifically in a larger form, but that'll also give you the follow-through list. We won't go through the list, but I'll just, at least you'll have it and you'll understand kind of the length of it and the depth of the actions.
Good.
But I'll definitely come prepared to talk about the Coast Guard housing.
Or whenever it's ready.
Yep.
You know, if it's not next meeting, that's fine, but we.
Well, if we have the, if we have the committee approved by then.
Yeah.
Maybe they can all come.
Well, sure.
And they can discuss how they're, we're gonna give them some direction.
Again.
What they have charged.
And it'd be communication, I agree.
Yeah, I think we can have it by the next meeting, so.
Okay.
I'll promise that.
Thank you.
Moving on to the quarterlies, these are quarterlies as of March, and so they're kind of just a, I'm gonna pass over them very quickly because what they really show is where we were as of the end of March, but in Article III of the annual town meeting, we did transfers, one of which was for the snow and ice. And so, in those transfers, we resolved a lot of the red or the deficit account numbers that we were seeing in the quarterlies.
Yep.
And a lot of them had to do with unanticipated retirements, you know, the snow and ice issue is obviously the snow and ice issue, kind of some programming changing that change expense lines, et cetera, et cetera. So, again, Article III resolved those. The next quarterly, which is the end of fiscal year, is the one that'll really tell us kind of where we are. What I think I'll do is probably in the next month, bring you kind of an in-between quarterlies, because as we get closer to the end of the fiscal year, it's good to track, to see kind of how we're moving along. The Article III dealt with moving some of the monies internal within the budget, but we still have the reserve fund transfers that we could see between now and July 15th. And so, I'll try to keep you up to speed as we move along in smaller bites, because this is the critical period. Then looking at that, we have two request forms and you have motions on them, the first one is the Victorian Ball.
I move that the board of selectmen vote to approve the Victorian Ball request, August 12th, 17, from 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM and 7:00 PM to 11:00 PM at the town hall.
Second. Okay, the discussion, no discussion? Any discussion on that?
No.
Okay, it's a good date, all those in favor?
Aye.
If you haven't been to the event or not kind of watched it from the outside, it's an incredible event and they transformed the town hall, it's really remarkable. Then the next item is the men's softball use request form.
I move the board of selectmen to vote to approve the hot men's softball event requested from May 12th, 17 to September 12th at Lowlands.
Second. Okay, discussion? Tony Barletta, I don't know. I'm just kidding, it's Tony Barletta put it in. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good old days.
Last item for you tonight for the town administrator report is, we have a request from the police chief who's looking to appoint John Monaco as a reserve police officer. As you remember, John has left us and so he's coming back to us as a reserve officer.
I move that the board of selectmen vote to appoint John M. Monaco as a reserve police officer upon the recommendation of Chief Dwyer.
Second. Okay, yeah, I actually know John, he's, it's nice to see he's coming back as a reserve, so.
That is great.
All those in favor?
Aye. Congratulations, John, and that's all I have for you tonight.
Okay. Old business? Any old business? Okay, under new business, I'd like to have the, I would like to meet with the hot housing authority for the next meeting, could you put them, I'd like to have them, the whole membership come up here, along with their director possibly for the next selectmen's meeting?
Sure.
Okay.
Is that a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Quick discussion?
Oh, sure, I'm sure.
What's our relationship with the, with them up there?
I'm sorry?
What would our relationship be? As board of selectmen?
To have them come?
No, yeah.
Well.
I'm obviously in favor of it, but.
We're in a, we're in a lawsuit and they want us to be part of it, so.
Okay, thank you.
We'll get it ironed out, okay?
All right. I'm sorry?
Closing announcements?
Okay, closing announcements, well, that's under new business, any other new business?
I'm sorry, new business, yes.
Sorry?
I'm sorry, new business, you're right.
Okay, any other, anything else? All right, closing announcements, Municipal Clerks Week. Commonwealth of Massachusetts, your proclamation, His Excellency the Governor Charles D. Baker, whereas the Office of the Municipal Clerk, a time audit and vital part of local government exists through the world and witnesses, and whereas the Office of the Municipal Clerk is always among public servants and whereas the Office of the Municipal Clerk provides a professional link between the citizens and the local governing bodies and agencies of government at other levels and whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be either mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and whereas the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, and whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of the Municipal Clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, county, and international professional organizations, and whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishment of the Office of the Municipal Clerk. Now therefore, I, Charles D. Baker, Governor of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, do hereby proclaim the week of May 1st to the 7th, 2017, I think that's a mistake.
Yeah, tell us again.
Okay, Municipal Clerks Week, and urge all the citizens of the Commonwealth to take cognizance of this event and participate fittingly in its observance, given that the Executive Chamber in Boston this first day of May in the year 2017.
I shall, I shall move that.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna do the announcements and we'll move back, come back to the executive session.
Okay. All right, the other announcements are, we're gonna have the hazardous waste day, Saturday, May 13th at 2017, 8:00 AM to 12:00 noon at the Lynn DPW, not in hot, Lynn, and it's a good deal, if you have anything to bring, just bring it, solvents, oil, motor oil, antifreeze, poisons that, you know, that you shouldn't have anymore. They don't want latex paint, there's a list that should be, can we post this on the internet?
I believe it is, but let me make sure of that, yes.
So that people understand what they can bring and what they shouldn't bring, because latex paint can be just dried and put it in the regular trash.
Exactly.
Camlish and waste, things like that.
Latex paint they can put in the regular trash?
Yeah, why don't you open the can and let it dry. Car batteries, computers can't come, batteries, none of that stuff, asbestos, but all the other stuff can.
Oh.
And it'll be on the. Web page. And then the other one would be the boat launching days, May 13th and May 15th, call Josh LaMarine at 978-462-9717 to get your boat aboard, if you wish.
And it's not the 14th, because that's Mother's Day, so.
Oh, May 13th, no, it says May 13th there, so.
Yeah, exactly.
Oh, okay, not May 14th, all right, all right. Okay, we have an executive session motion?
I shall move.
Second. I move the board of selectmen go into the executive session for the purpose of discussing legal strategy and personnel matters and we will not return to open session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
Adjourn.